To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there any member that would like to pull anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I take a motion to be approved.
So moved.
Let's go to errors. Second by Tracy Martin, three in discussion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. With Amy Brown and Councilman Ryder have requested to be.
Yeah, still can, yep. They changed that legislation, waiting for the governor to sign about virtual meetings, but right now we're still as we've always been, well, always been, but last year.
Because they got a better gig. Got a better gig.
We're just getting kicked off. Can you mute on your end? Can you mute on your end? Yeah, can you mute on your end, please?
Eric, you should hear some of the conversations Luke Britt and I have.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, because we're kind of, you know, we take no hostages usually. Oh, no.
So Councilman Ryder did not vote on that motion.
As I am, not.
But he is now attending virtually.
That's what matters, yeah.
Um, Ethan Brown has. Pretty good. Uh, next item on the agenda is the financial report. Totally year-to-date budget, 325% of the year is at 26.25%, as we discussed before. That figure is just a little skewed because of the $600,000 appropriation for the COVID and whatever COVID will be. So that shows us budgeted and appropriated, budgeted spent, so that's kind of throwing the numbers off a little bit, so. That's where we are here today. Is there anybody else that would like to add or ask questions on budget costs?
I got a, I'm sure it's a very simple answer, but how do we come to get $600, almost $700,000 of seats in March? And you don't have to ask, I'm sure it's a very simple answer, but I don't know, you know, where are we? Up on the very top line at the first page, the seats for the month, $698,000 in the general.
Oh, you're talking about on the, on the.
On that sort of board.
On the monthly financial statement?
Yes, yes. I just.
What was your question? I'm not 100% sure what you're asking.
What the revenue was?
How do we come to get $700,000 in a non-tax?
Oh, property tax. Well, the biggest one is the certified shares, certified shares for the month, and that's on the other report, the revenue expenditure comparison. The, our lit comes in, our tax, uh, income tax revenue comes in monthly, and that's about $570,000.
Okay. I say, I'm sure there's a simple answer, but I didn't understand.
This is the auditor, isn't it?
Thank you.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you.
Yes. Anybody else have any questions on the budget large? So again, can you start off on individual reports?
Yeah, so going through the reports that Beth sent, the auditors at 21.25% year-to-date, commissioners are a little high at 43.4%. I went through the line items, there's nothing red flag there, they're just, they're just a little high on a year-to-date, I think that'll even out if it has been close three years. 1172, the lit piece app is at 18.65. I will say the repairs and maintenance line there, that department has spent 5,300 of the 6,700 budgeted, so they're 80% used up that line. So I know we've had multiple conversations about the maintenance issues and the contract discussions and things there, but I'll just draw that to the attention of the council. Same thing is true for the 1222 line, the statewide 9-1-1. They're at 22.3%. So overall, no, no concerns. That being said, the repairs and maintenance line, they've utilized 32,000 of the budgeted 40,000, so that's 79% year-to-date. So going through that line pretty quickly as the year progresses, and again, it's just, it's that continuing conversation and consideration of the, the equipment, maintenance, and of deep loss there. So that's, that's the only thing that I had to bring to the council, Beth.
I have nothing, thank you.
I don't have anything, Herschel, I'm most my, of course, in the warranty still attempting to gear back up, and they're coming in 15, 16%, so hopefully we can.
So the sheriff is running at 19.39, jail 16.23, animal control 17%, so everything looks pretty good there. I, you know, to what Tim was speaking about, jail continues to be a question mark. They spent, I can't remember what that number was, 40,000, 50,000, maybe more on that main sewer pipe, and now there are discussions about doing the lateral lines, which, they're smaller lines, but more money, so that's obviously concerning, but as far as the, those are more major capital investments, I guess it was maintenance, but that's what we're, you know, the main issues facing those departments. 911 is running at 22.51% of the, everything's good there. There's something that he wants us to take a look at here, and he's here today, in fact, we don't have to discuss it today, but at some point about a decade ago, the council purchased two new ambulances in this same calendar year. So there's this odd cycle where we have two ambulances that are older, and we need to look at, see how we can kind of get that spread back out in terms of utilization, maybe making a lot of hospital workers, doing some rehab, something to make that go along, but not top of mind at this point. And then probation is at 19.5%, so that'll be able to stick there. Anybody else have anything to add in terms of financial reporting? All right, so now we'll move on to the auditors report.
Okay, the tech management report, I emailed to you at the beginning of the month, I think it was April 1st, that has to be in the minutes that you have received it and reviewed it. It was supposed to be done by April 15th, but you have received it and reviewed it on your email, so that counts. There's no approval of this report, it's just approving that you are acknowledging that you got it.
I have a motion to acknowledge received of the tech management report.
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Stotter. Is there a second?
All right.
Second. I have a hard discussion, all in favor, aye.
I do have a part of copy if you want one.
Councilman Ryder is aye. So the motion of Dr. Stotter, seconded by. Motion carries.
The next is, um, the custodian is requesting a, a change in his salary ordinance, just to add another part-time custodian to the salary ordinance. It says one, and he would like for it to say two, because he has Shay Lynn that used to work for him, works part-time in the child support office. When he, he had some problems, he needed her to work one day, and I told him that, you know, she was, not terminated, but she had quit the job, so she really wasn't eligible to work until it was all cleaned up and also the salary ordinance. So he would just like to change that one line item of part-time custodian to two.
So he's not required to request any budget change?
Just, just the number.
Just the number.
Just the number. Just in case his others weren't available, and then she can't work over the 25 hours, he knows that, and we've worked all that out, so.
So the motion would need to be to amend the salary ordinance for custodian part-time to have two available. Would anybody like to make that motion? All right, so the motion by Dr. Stotter. Is there a second?
One second.
Seconded by Tracy Martin. Is there any discussion?
So just, just real quickly, so I understand. He utilizes the same budgeted amount of money. If he has his regular part-time that can't come in, this individual would step in, there's no increase in payout or payroll. Okay, all right, I understand.
And just for the record, Councilman Brown enters immediately, and 14. We can have to vote on this motion.
All in favor, go ahead.
We have, you can understand. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Councilman Ryder votes aye. Motion carries, with extension by you. Go ahead, Beth, is that, do you have anything else?
I'm done.
All right, next item on the agenda is 911 director Cassie Lane, discussing the funding of the 911 backup center.
Which would you like to talk about first?
Your part. Whatever you like.
Okay, we'll start with the backup center. So I'm coming for you to ask for funding for the backup center. We already have the radios, you guys have already purchased them. There is some connectivity cost that we will eventually have, you won't know when, we didn't know what that would be, but all the pricing is still the same, you might just, I mean, with the sheriff coming in, that we have to redo the lines, and they're wanting to install or bring in four pods, you will. What time is, but if, we just need a backup center. We need it to be functioning, we bought the radios, we bought the, the computers for the CAD, we just need the phone lines to be over there, the internet to be over there, and things like that. So we're just coming back again to see if we can't work through this and, and maybe get funding for it. What's the annual maintenance cost over here? The total for the first year would be 22,784, so that would include the 911 phone and internet would be 2280, it's 190 a month, so 2280 per year. The recording is $1,000 for installation, and then $3,676 for the first year after that, or during that first year. And then the radio connection is a 60-month agreement, that is $1,319 a month.
So 1319 a month after the first year?
For 60 months, every year for 60 months, or for every month for 60 months. So total, that would be $79,140 for the 60 months.
But after you do the 22784 maintenance, that's not an annual warranty, that's just the first year connectivity crack.
Because that $1,000 for the recording, you wouldn't have the next year.
You might as well count it, I mean, is any of this contractual year-over-year? Are these fixed foster, or are they variable? You might as well.
They're fixed, they're fixed.
I'd, I'd take that $1,000 in, because I, I mean, once you do it, you can't go back, and so the stinkiness of the agreement is there, right? And prices are just, are going to increase, I'm just, I would figure it in.
What do you mean you'd figure it in?
Well, I think if, if you're at $23,000 this year, you might as well figure in $23,000 for the next.
Well, I asked that question, that's the question I asked. When you pay this first year, going into year two, is it only $1,300 a month?
No, it would be the 22784, the only one.
And timing that it would go down is after about 60 months, then you would lose that 1319 a month. The only cost. So it's going to be like $25,000.
Yeah, just to make the math and the, the concept of this project easy in your mind, $23,000.
Well, we have, you have to. Let's just go with $25,000.
I guess I have a question. We've got, we've got three stations, right?
But the backup there would be.
One north, north of town, one in, in sheriff's office, and one floor, right?
No, we only have the sheriff's office, and then the backup center on Flora.
What do we have up on?
That's EMS.
I think we've asked this before, but I'll ask it again. Would you utilize the backup center for anything other than backup and training? Would you move anybody over there on a permanent rotating basis?
I don't think so, I think we would just need to be there in training, and if there were an event that would take out the main center.
Have you asked them if we could transfer, I mean, this is a licensing issue, that's what the cost is, right? The lion's share of the cost is this license for the two units that are.
For the phone or for the recording?
Phone.
So, I mean, you would still have to keep the phone system at the main center, and the recording, you could transfer it, but then we're going to have to take the recording equipment with us when we go over there, and in that, that transfer process of us moving, you would lose all those recordings.
Right, so, well, what I'm saying is, like, it's never going to get used, it couldn't blend in, it is feasible to say that we can have this for the next five years and it'd never be used.
I would disagree with that, because we would use it for training over there, we would run out of there at least once a month as a normal center.
Which means move in all that recording equipment.
Right, right, right.
So you're going to, you're going to discontinue your operations here and work over there one day?
At least.
For the explicit reason of just making sure that it works, or?
Making sure that it works, and making sure that they know what to do when they get over there, and how to get everything up and running when they get over there, and, and all of that, in the event of something were to happen.
Is it the same, very same system?
It would be.
Okay, so what you would pay for them to get that out, and the remaining difference in starting out the work?
Start just logging in, that would be the only difference, would be logging in, the logins would be different.
You'd like a lot of money for duplication.
Right, but when it goes down and you don't have it, what are you going to do?
I mean, they didn't give them time to develop a train track, right, or if it were tank of a tipso or leaks or something, we may have to evacuate soon.
Nothing.
So if that happens, we have.
911s would roll, we can't be counting that, we don't have a way.
So they'd roll to somewhere else.
The 911s, we wouldn't have a way to reach fire departments, or EMS, if that were to happen.
Hey, Mike?
Yes?
The new mobile command center.
Yes.
What's the capability of it to get up and operational if what this gentleman described took place?
If we wanted to get it to be able to do dispatch and that, I would have to invest a lot of money to get it to do dispatch. We'd have to take all that equipment that's already set in the, the backup center, waiting to be hooked up and turned on, we'd have to convert all that over into that system, and then probably purchase a larger generator to run it. And, I want, so, I mean, it would take a lot more.
I'd like to make a motion to fund this out of county general for the $25,000.
Why would we fund it? I have a motion on the floor to fund this out of county general, is there a second?
Here shortly, you're going to be getting information about the jail, about the lines and stuff, you have to fix.
Mr. President? Would we get a second or not before we continue the discussion, please?
Uh, is there, uh, is there a second to the motion? Motion asks for like a second.
I just have one thing, though. When they review the lines at the jail, we have to suck the water, so, or the sheriff's said it's going to take about a week. So the water, the toilet, people's toilets inside, so that's concerned. I mean, I'm not a bad, if I show it to the bathroom, at least once a half.
Oh, thank you. Just in general, like, um, when, when the council was approached about these radios, and, and we had the choice between buying three and buying five, it was the end of the world if we didn't buy all five. And there was no plan to execute to get them usable at that time, and we weren't told, hey, it's going to be another $25,000 a year for five years, and I have $125,000 to make these functional on top, and like, like, it's a great deal of grandstanding that was done at that time. So, like, this back and forth, where we, I mean, I mean, you have to be aware that the budget has like doubled over the last four years, I don't know exactly, but it is, it is a, a huge amount over, in four years. So, I mean, this incremental, like, we got another $25,000, another $25,000, another $25,000, like, when does it end?
I mean, I feel the backup center is pretty important for our citizens to have if our center goes down.
Well, yeah, you, you made that apparent. What I'm talking about is the communication back and forth where it's just.
I was told that my rep would communicate with me afterwards, and I have yet to hear from him, it was the first time that I came to you guys to talk about this.
I, I would like to, I have email communications, I have emails that have my phone number on.
We need to go big once, and so that we need to get together tomorrow, let us, and you never set a date with me.
I, I just, I'm not going to be, I'm not going to be thrown under the bus as the reason that communication has broken down.
In the last 25 years, how many times have you moved the backup center? I don't know, I've not moved it for four years, I'm sorry, do you do?
We've got a few, I mean.
What have you done?
What have we done? We had to actually call someone in to come in and try to repair the system when we had to, had to close. That would have been excellent timing somewhere else. Even though we need the cop fire.
The most recent event that they probably could have used in the backup center was the fire and dispatch on Father's Day.
When they replaced the lines, they had no water for, for two days, and they were sick and tired, stopping to run to the gas station, we'd have to run, we'd walk in, stuff like that.
So that's the only time, I think, you can recall in the last.
Not to mention, when they run the lot, when they replace those lines, all those machines in there, you can't hear those calls while those machines are running.
Is that the only one that?
The last major event that interrupted.
But I'm asking how many events in the last, say, 10 to 15 years? I'm trying.
I've been, I've been near three.
There have been times, I can't give you an actual account, there have been times the radio has went down, we've had to wait for a call to come up. It wasn't a situation where we had to evacuate, that our radios had gone down before.
On the new system or the?
Not the new system, the old system, I mean.
If one event, though, just one time, though, that could save somebody's life, how much, how much is, how much is that going to be worth? Is that one, I mean, is there, if that was down when a fire happened at your place, would that, would you rather say, okay, it went down, but we have some jobs to go, say, hey, this is down, go over there real quick, we're going to get up and running, we're going to be going, because this was down here, we still have multiple people going to answer these calls, we can still get the fire trucks going, and I was at a, you know, we can still.
The key right there.
So go.
She's going to get everything going, because you're going to have to pack up, go over there, the house is going.
If we had a backup center, we'd already be over there.
I, I just want to reiterate, like, when, when you made this request, that we had to have these radios, or people were going to die for the backup center, we've had those radios for what, the best part of two years? And no backups in it, functioning backups.
We've been asking for the funding.
This is the first formal budget request that you've had for this.
I came to you guys already once with the same exact questions. Two questions. Yeah.
And, and, okay.
I, I recall, I would ask this question, and I recall asking this in email too as well, where in the budget can we look to find that $25,000? Because I agree, I agree with, with Josh's assessment, the budget has grown and grown and grown year-over-year, okay? So I, I don't dispute the value of a backup center, I don't dispute all of the valid input that is being brought to the council, where a backup center would be beneficial to the community, I don't. But where do we fund it? And, and where in, again, in your budget, can we find $25,000 for the next five years? And not really, because, I mean, it's for the next, fill in the blank number of years, because once you do it, you don't not do it. And so, and I remember telling you, we're going to need to find the money in the budget to do this.
I mean, every year when I came to you guys with a budget, you reduce it more than what I even bring to you, so we're always skipping away from our budget, so I don't know, I don't have anywhere out of my budget that I can transfer the $25,000.
The last two years, you've brought million-dollar budgets to the council.
Right, and we reduced it and not gotten that, and I understand that.
I, 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 they're, they're 40% increases that you're bringing year-over-year, I mean, your budget increase was more than the entire budget increase for the entire county to try to get raises all the way towards, and I understand what you do is critically important, and we, we need it, but I mean, what is out? Where do we pull?
I guess I can ask the same question, a few years ago, you gave the sheriff's department 10% raises, and you didn't do that for everyone else. You were able to find options to do that, I, I guess I don't understand.
Yeah, well, I know you don't understand, because that whole, that whole year, the new money that we spent was less than $400,000 in, in new spending. Like, I, I'm just trying to get you to understand the scale of what we're talking about, and how expensive per call it is to run this center.
It is expensive.
Relative, relative to how other counties paid per call for service. Like, it, it just continues to, like, I, I just, I, I just struggle with it, because like, like, what are we supposed to do?
So what's your suggestion? Let's, let me throw a scenario at you, we have to evacuate the center tomorrow, what do we do? Where do we go? Have some people call 911, your name, or your fire truck, your police officer, what do we do? What's your suggestion?
I, I'm, that's what I'm asking you, like, how do we do this? Not you, you're not the department head, I'm asking the department head, how, how do we?
See, if the rules to Clinton County, Clinton County cannot dispatch our responders, but that takes custody. And they're not going to ask the same questions, we're going to be more familiar anyway with the area. Well, you know what they do, when it rolls over to? What do you know what they do? When it rolls over to them? They roll it back to us.
Roll where?
They send it back to us. And there's a transfer button. Oh, you're in Carroll County, so they.
Transfer, yeah.
It'll just keep that cycle until someone in Carroll County's able to pick that one up. If we're on, if we're on a crash scene, we did twenty calls on nine-one-one for a single crash that looks bad. You may get twenty calls to come in. Suddenly they'll roll over, but they roll it back to us. You know, you could end up with forty calls on a single crash. That, that's how the rule would work. Spring so many times and it goes to, I doesn't make it roll. If I get a call in.
Well, you shouldn't even roll it over because if it's gonna roll back, then what's the purpose?
Because the whole intent level on somebody answers the call.
No, but if you just tell me nobody's gonna answer it.
I just said it rolls to Clinton County. Clinton County will pick it up, turn it up, but he can go and send it back to us. But he kind of has a roll over as well. Eventually it really picked up.
So, to my point, um, the cost per call has increased over time. Ev- everything has increased over time. Is, is there any mechanism for cost containment on, in your department? So the only answer is it's gonna continue to go up in cost no matter what we do.
I mean, I think our biggest cost that we've had recently was the CAD and radio. Outside of that, we've not implemented anything new that's increased our budget drastically.
Well, those, those investments, which were fixed costs, also have maintenance costs, which are varying as. And so they're not, I'm, I'm just saying, it's not just the thing that you buy, it's the tail. And, and those tails are cumulative.
Right. So we buy new vehicles, new ambulances, those have maintenance costs as well. I don't understand why it's okay, an ambulance for EMS is our CAD system. That's our equivalent. It's an apple to an apple, even though they're apples and oranges. If we can find a way to budget for their apples, why can't we find a way to budget for our apples? They're just as important to our citizens.
I agree that, that what you do is important. The, the ambulance's budget has gone by forty percent or whatever the number is.
But you found a way to accommodate their needs for new ambulances every four, five, six, whatever it may be. And it's the same way with the sheriff's vehicles. You know, those are their, their offices. If they, if their car breaks down, they go into a pool car. They have a backup. We don't have anything for our citizens. We're still, the sheriff's department's still able to supply backup centers, if you will, by a pool car to get to the calls that they need to get to. If we don't have backups now, our citizens aren't gonna be able to get those resources.
So have you even talked to the, to the company to see if they would be willing to negotiate with us, given that these are not full-time used? Maybe these units are not in full.
No, I've explained to them that it would be for a backup center and asked what the cost would be and not what they gave us.
So they said there, there's no discount. That's the same cost per ra, per unit as the regular center, correct?
I mean, we don't pay for, we don't pay for backup phones at our current center, so.
No, the license for each, you know, for each station. This, this, this fee is the same as the fee that would, that we pay for our primary station.
Well, we're paying for phones. We cannot make a six hundred and fifty dollars for maintenance agreement for our phones at our current center. This is a hundred and ninety dollars a month for phones.
I, I'm not talking about the dollar, I'm talking about the system. The, the almost thirteen hundred dollars a month for the.
Is that for running both of them or can you just run one? That is for the internet or the radio to work.
Now that we're on the subject of that, the twenty-three thousand dollars, to explain that in the.
Sure.
A hundred and thirteen hundred and nothing dollars a month.
Yep.
On top of that, that's only sixteen dollars a year.
So the nine-on-one phone and internet is a hundred and ninety dollars a month, which a year is twenty-two eighty. The recording system is a thousand dollar installation and then yearly is thirty-six, or I'm sorry, three thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars. And then the radio connection is a sixty-month agreement at a thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars a month, or seventy-nine thousand one hundred and forty for the sixty months. So that is what our total cost, twenty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-four would be.
So the thirteen hundred or not is included in that?
Correct.
For the total?
Correct.
I think I understand.
So is there a difference if you, if you run one radio or if you run maybe just to the three, four, three? So is it, is it possible if you run one, you're not in that? I would, I would like to see if you could just run one.
Well, answering the point or just one radio, so, two cans, one radio?
Whatever makes it possible for that backup center to have one access to dispatch. What you need to dispatch.
If they have to evacuate, I thought they had two people, but it was just one person sitting.
Would you rather have one there than none?
Don't get them all going, we're on one person.
It doesn't happen every day.
No, eventually something's gonna happen. You never know that.
I'd like to see the cost of just one.
Um, the other thing that we wanna bring in front of you is sick time. Jim, go ahead.
In the personnel policy, it states that sick time when you retire is not paid out. Whatever you have accumulated, you lose. I'd like to commission a federal agent first. This quote was, oh, again, by me. They have not approved it. They'll ask me if I'm there for you guys. I'd like to see it paid out when a person retires. So, not everybody keeps their, their sick time. A lot of people say, hey, it's an ice out. My efficiency is a fault of said. Some people don't do that. Some people actually, those guys will work through it. You need incentive. Incentive would be if everybody showed a quarter and made a stable. Instead of just staying here for a few years and.
Beth, has, is there a proposed policy?
I made a, made a proposal to the commissioner of federal agency.
And he suggested that, I believe, quote this right, if you were here, have ten years invested, you get fifty percent. In fifteen years, you get seventy-five percent. In twenty years, you get a hundred percent.
Do you have any idea what that cost is? I mean, what the, what the number of, like, eight days in the system that we?
The sick time?
Yeah.
They can accumulate up to sixty days.
What's our expected action on this? For the commissioners to pump us, what are we, what are we?
Decision fight, basically. Just because they approved it, I mean, you, the council.
They're wanting to know your feelings about it.
Basically.
What constitutes retirement versus I quit, I'm going someplace else versus I'm on extended leave versus?
You would have to do the ten, fifteen, twenty years. I mean, if you worked here ten years, just.
Yeah, you would start working, you would have to.
Is there a formal policy being presented?
He presented his proposal. Um, I.
I mean, does it, does it take, does it take into account termination for cause and all those kinds of things?
It is just for.
It didn't interfere terms. Doesn't have to do with being fired.
Yeah, it's just for retirement is what the proposal was. Yes.
So how would our personnel policy delineate?
It would have to be an exception.
Got the amendment for that particular policy. Such a four-point-six in the handle.
Do you know how many people in the courthouse would qualify for this today? I mean, not in the courthouse, in the, how many county employees would qualify for this today?
Well, if we enacted it, on one department, it's gonna have to be.
Well, it's an unfunded liability, so that's what my point is. That's what, I mean, so, I mean.
No, I, I.
I mean, for us to, to manage it correctly, it's no different than managing healthcare costs. You're gonna budget for it and it's an unfunded mandate. Currently, we would have to appropriate for that. We have to know how much that bucket of money is. It's no different than the pension fund for the police officers. We, we budget for that and we pay into it every year so that when our police officer retires, there's money to pay. So that, I mean, that would be my biggest question.
I'm going to use Jim as an example if you would like. I think he's been here twenty-three years.
Twenty-three years.
And how many sick days do you have?
Um, about four, I think.
Hours, hours.
Hours, those hours, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, we need to talk.
They just say, I'm walking out of that.
So I, you know, it, and how much do you make now?
Um.
I have.
Seventeen.
I say eighteen dollars, yeah, seventeen. You can do math here. I have.
That's what you really have to figure out.
Better worth a thousand dollars. How many exists?
I, I don't know.
Yeah, it does.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't because you don't know in five years, ten years, fifteen years, how many are gonna exist. But I know what you're trying to get a fundable number now. Is that what you want?
Yeah, so, so, I mean, that's where you gotta start.
Yeah.
And then you gotta manage it, no different than you manage the police retirement.
I see it as a, I see it as a good perk. I mean, this is, is a hiring perk to keep people to work. As we all know, it's getting higher and harder and harder to get people to come and to stay and.
And show up for work.
And to work five years under the same roof. And that's.
What if we ask each department head, can we look at the list of who's been here for long, Debbie, about years ago? So we had a number. We can see where we're at right now.
I guess what Josh is saying, I guess like one of the things they say, if you wanna know how many people are projected to retire like before December.
Yeah, I mean, so today there's a number. Like, we have, if we enacted this policy, today we, we have a liability of however many people times the pay rate times the number of six days. So that's, that's a quantifiable figure. So we need to appropriate that amount of money into a fund that pays these, not, you know, somebody retires and now that department head has a liability of ten thousand dollars that they have to come up out of their budget because they gotta pay that first amount. This needs to be its own thing. It needs to be set up in such a way that that the, it's there, it's funded and it's budgeted on an annual basis to make sure that it's actuarially correct.
We're talking about a maximum of sixty days, is that correct?
Pardon?
A maximum of sixty days.
They can only accumulate sixty days. I mean, I need to do some more.
I'm not sure about the hundred, I mean, a hundred percent. I'm not sure how much of this is our, I'm not so sure about the hundred percent.
Four-point-six.
It doesn't have to be a hundred percent in twenty years. I mean, you can still make it a perk and, because a lot of people don't use their insurance either, but they don't get three hundred and eighty, they didn't use the insurance.
Well, I need that to retire last year. I mean, I know we don't wanna go backwards, but that's not, all of a sudden. Don't take this wrong, please. But he's retiring. So he's, it's a special interest to him.
Yes.
And so I wish we would've thought about it when two, two people from Carroll County really were here a long time and they resigned, or retired at the October, December area. Really, there were three, I can think of. I don't know about the third one, how long she was here, but.
Do this anywhere with what they're concerned as well?
And electric officials is.
I would like to figure out if you show up and settle on that week.
Right, we would, I would think that that would not be.
Like I say, the sheriff, he chose to come on duty January first, go off duty, he's done it for the year. Back to.
Um, I think that's being changed to one day a month, but they can look in that. But a dedicated, a dedicated elected official would not do that. And I don't think that we can keep track. I do not keep track of my sick time. Um, my vacation, I do. I kinda try to do what my employees do. But the other thing too is I'm supposed to get four weeks and there's no way that I get four weeks during the year. I might take a day here and a day there just trying. But what, back to the real reason is, I don't think that the elected official will get into this. Um, but my thing is, I think it.